The 319th Meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is called to order in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. During this meeting, the Board will be conducting business from the agenda posted in the Texas Register. Members of the Board present for this meeting are Darrellin Paramon, Vice Chairman, Pastor Larry Miles, Secretary, Members Monode Ayala, Judge Molly Francis, Judge Faith Johnson, Ambassador Sitchan Sev, Eric Nichols, and Dr. Rodney Burrow. A quorum is present, and the 309th Meeting of the Board is declared open. It is 12:30. Before we begin, Dr. Burrow will lead us with a word of prayer.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the privilege of living in the greatest nation in the world and the greatest state in our nation, Texas. We ask, Lord, that you bless everyone involved with the Wyndham School District, including the administration, the teachers, the ancillary and support staff, and most of all, the students, Lord. We pray that the knowledge gained will be a benefit to them and their communities, Lord. We ask for clear minds and no hindrance to learning. Lord, there's a lot of turmoil and sickness in the world and in our country, and we just pray for peace and for healing. Lord, we pray that you bless the leaders of our country and our state and with the decisions that they have to make, Lord. We pray that you bless Texas and its inhabitants. It's in His name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow. As a courtesy to speakers and guests in the meeting, please turn electronic devices to the silent or vibrate mode. Thank you. I know this is a virtual meeting, and many are watching, but I would like to take a moment to say thank you to any public officials and/or staff representatives who are watching today. Thank you for joining and for your support. Let us begin. The Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is committed to providing an opportunity for public presentations on posted agenda topics as well as for public comments on issues within its jurisdiction as provided in Board Rule 300.1. Persons interested in speaking at today's meeting were required to complete and submit a registration form provided in the posting of today's meeting by 5:00 PM on August 12, 2020. As no cards were received prior to the required deadline, the Board will not hear public presentations on posted agenda topics today or public comments on issues within the Board's The first agenda item is recognitions. Mr. Sawnick, I understand you would like to recognize workforce specialist in college and career readiness, Mr. Nathan Herrod. Thank you for joining us today. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Board. I would like to introduce Nathan Herrod, Wyndham's workforce specialist in college and career readiness. In this role, Nathan serves as the coordinator for the development of implementation of the standard high school diploma program for young students, the liaison for post-secondary education with TDCJ's rehabilitative programs division, the point of contact and review coordinator for articulation agreements with colleges, and the facilitator for the district's college and career initiatives. Nathan joined the Wyndham School District in January 2020. Mr. Herrod's career experiences helped prepare him for this position. He has taught at the middle school, high school, community college, and university levels. He served the Florida Department of Corrections as a placement and transition specialist, a principal at a 3,000-resident high-security prison, and a regional principal specialist. Nathan holds a Master's of Arts from the University of Florida, a Master of Divinity from Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary, and a Bachelor's of Arts from Texas A&amp;M University. In the time that I have known Nathan, it's apparent to me he is a person of outstanding honesty, trust, and commitment. I'm certain these character traits serve him well, not only in life, but in his future with our district. Nathan is a husband and pastor of his local church. We are very excited to have him as part of our Wyndham School District team. Please help me welcome Nathan Herrod.
Congratulations, Mr. Herrod. Thank you for the work that you do. Let's continue with the next item on the agenda. The next agenda topic covers consent items. Are there any amendments, objections, or abstentions to the proposed consent items? Hearing none, the consent items posted for this meeting's agenda will stand approved. The next item on the agenda is the report from the superintendent of the Wyndham School District. Christina Hartman will be providing a report on Wyndham School District's Lane Murray Excellence in Teaching Award recipient and finalist. Ms. Hartman, please proceed.
Thank you. The Wyndham School District recently announced the 2020-2021 School Year District Teacher of the Year and recipient of the Lane Murray Excellence in Teaching Award and district finalists. Wyndham's Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year, Jerry Riley, from the Panhandles Region Neil Unit, will represent WSD as district teacher of the year and receive the Lane Murray Excellence in Teaching Award. The award is named for Dr. Lane Murray, the first superintendent of the Wyndham School District and pioneer in educational opportunities for incarcerated individuals. Jerry Riley signifies a teacher who genuinely goes the extra mile for his students to be successful. With a primary focus on skill development to secure productive employment upon reentry into the community, Mr. Riley dedicates his curriculum to providing ample resources and tools for students to obtain exemplary knowledge in the field of construction with an emphasis on carpentry. He is committed to advancing students past the context of a classroom and successfully into a trade work environment. Mr. Riley exemplifies the mission of the Wyndham School District in full by providing excellent educational opportunities for students to effectively reduce recidivism through career pathways and life skills development from a technical perspective. Intrinsic motivation is at the heart of Jerry Riley's teaching practices, and for this reason and many listed above, he has been selected as the district teacher of the year. The two recognized finalists are Wyndham's Life Skills Teacher of the Year, Rosalinda Juarez of the Sanchez State Jail in El Paso, and Wyndham's Academic Teacher of the Year, Lee Russell of the Conley Unit in Kennedy. Rosalinda Juarez has a true dedication to her position as a Life Skills Changes teacher of the Wyndham School District and exhibits a sincere passion for connecting with her students to promote best practices. Ms. Juarez came to Wyndham with a distinct mission to teach the complexities of inclusivity and acceptance of multicultural populations and to implore students to protectively learn from one another and celebrate cultural uniqueness for optimal growth and development. She provides ample innovative strategies for evolving cultural perspectives and encourages leadership development in her classroom through artistic expression and creative analysis and coursework curriculum. Ms. Juarez utilizes the trials and tribulations of her own previous experiences to exemplify understanding of the difficulties faced by her students and provide guidance for obtaining a better future. For these reasons, Ms. Juarez has been selected as the Life Skills Teacher of the Year and was named as a finalist for the district teacher of the year. Lee Russell exhibits a true passion for teaching and a sincere dedication to going above and beyond for students to succeed. He is dedicated to helping students to reach their potential through support and positive reinforcement. Mr. Russell provides authentic strategies for best practices in a classroom environment. When asked to give advice to new Wyndham teachers, Mr. Russell recites his own golden rules of education and strategies for student success, emphasizing the importance of effectively motivating students through facilitative instruction and transformational learning practices. Mr. Russell's commitment to adapting his teaching methods to meet the needs of each student individually and his passion for providing top-notch educational experiences for all participating students deserves to be recognized and celebrated. For these reasons, he's been selected as the academic teacher of the year and was named as a finalist for the district teacher of the year. The Wyndham School District is proud of the accomplishments of these exemplary educators who represent the many dedicated teachers across the state and our district. I would also like to provide a brief update on the response from our educators and staff to a district-wide survey that was developed in order to assess the climate and morale of our team during COVID-19 protocols and to request and act on feedback from our Wyndham team. Over 700 individuals responded to the survey to include principals, teachers, librarians, support staff, and employees assigned to the administration building. A five-point Likert skill was used with responses ranging from "not effective" or[618.22][618.22]"never" to "very safe, very supportive." Categories included perceived safety, support from the administration, and level of effectiveness during distance learning. 374 of the 700 individuals also chose to answer the open-ended question, seeking suggestions or comments from staff. Questions and comments were reviewed and categorized into six areas: instruction, technology, communication, professional development, safety, and general operations. The results of the survey were shared with the district, and suggestions are being addressed and shared via email on a weekly basis with the format of suggestion, action, and responsible party. Our staff have expressed thanks in seeking their opinion on these matters. And also, just to give a couple of examples, one of the questions that we asked was how supportive has the administration been in meeting your distance learning and remote work needs? The majority of our staff answered either supportive, more supportive than expected, or very supportive. So over 620 in that level of response. And we also asked about perceived safety and asked whether or not established public health protocols were being followed at their units, and the majority of staff answered "always." Again, we're taking their comments and feedback very seriously. They've had some excellent suggestions, and I look forward to future discussion with the Board related to our staff morale and survey. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Are there any questions from the Board? If not, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the chairman's report. The Wyndham School District will pilot a standard high school diploma program beginning in the fall of 2020 with a high school named after the illustrious Texan Matthew Gaines. This program establishes a method for eligible incarcerated students to earn a high school diploma and an industry-recognized certification in an environment that meets the needs of the learner. The high school program will address the needs of eligible students in adult correctional facilities and improve their quality of life by providing academic and career and technical education courses that lead to a standard high school diploma, career exploration leading to post-secondary education and training opportunities or employment, industry-recognized certifications, and special education and Title I services for eligible students. Initial enrollment in the high school will consist of 40 male students aged 26 and under with priority given to students under the age of 22. A standard high school diploma program for incarcerated women is currently offered at the San Saba Unit through a memorandum of understanding with the Mullen Independent School District and another for men at the Hughes Unit by the Lomita Independent School District. WSD's program will allow for an accurate assessment of student success in a program that emphasizes career and technical education competencies in addition to core courses and provides an accurate cost comparison. Student enrollment in either the standard high school diploma program or the high school equivalency program will be a multidisciplinary team decision that will include the student and considers the number of credits needed to graduate with the standard diploma, student's remaining time on sentence, student's age, and student's custody level. Priority will be placed on the option that will most likely result in completion and award of a diploma, standard or equivalency, and industry-recognized certification in order to prepare the student for immediate employment or post-secondary education enrollment following release from incarceration. The Matthew Gaines High School will be located at the Ferguson Unit near Huntsville in Midway, Texas. Matthew Gaines, 1840 to 1900, was a former slave, community leader, minister, and Texas State Senator who made significant contributions in public education and public reform. Mr. Gaines was born into slavery on August 4, 1842, near Alexandria, Louisiana. Reportedly, a young white man living on the plantation smuggled books to Matthew, who taught himself to read, which back then was a criminal offense. After the Civil War, Gaines eventually settled in Burton, Washington County, Texas. He became a Baptist minister as well as a leader of the freedmen. Gaines was known as a powerful orator and spoke seven languages. Gaines, elected as a Republican, was one of four black men to serve Texas as state senator during the 19th century. Gaines fought for many issues: education, mental health aid, prison reform, the protection of Black Americans at the polls in their election to public office, tenant farming reform, and restraints on bribery and fraud. In 1871, Gaines sponsored successful legislation to exempt educational and religious groups from taxation as an incentive to improve communities. Although unjustly removed from office and even arrested for speaking out about civil rights, Matthew Gaines never backed down from what he believed in. Indeed, his arrest followed a speech in which he told his audience, quote, "In the eyes of God, blacks should have pride and hold their heads up even in troubled times," end quote. Well, we are in troubled times now, and every graduate of the Matthew Gaines High School should be able to hold up their heads in pride too. Senator Matthew Gaines passionately supported the Forward Movement that established the first public school system for all Texans. Per Texas A&amp;M University's Division of Student Affairs, quote, "The first African-American state senator from Washington County, he was instrumental in the 12th Texas Legislature's passage of Senate Bill 276, which created the Agricultural and Mechanical College of Texas under the Land Grant College Act of 1862, also known as the Morrill Act." Because of his service to the Texas State Legislature, support of civil rights, work in prison reform, and champion of education, the name Matthew Gaines is a powerful reminder of the result of perseverance and commitment, an expectation that will hold true to the students of Wyndham's aptly-named high school program. Some say pride comes before a fall, but the Matthew Gaines High School seeks to reverse that saying. After a fall in a high school education comes pride. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an overview of the Wyndham Annual Performance Report for the 2018-2019 school year. John Lilly, Division Director of Instruction, will be presenting today. Thank you for joining us today. Please begin with your presentation.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Board. My name is John Lilly, and I am the Division Director of Instruction with the Wyndham School District. At Wyndham, the journey to success follows the road that aligns appropriate educational and training opportunities with meaningful employment. It is my privilege to share our annual report highlights with you today, covering the time period from September 1, 2018 until August 34, 2019. WSD students are incarcerated individuals in the Texas Department of Criminal Justice who are in need of educational opportunities that range from literacy and high school equivalency programs to advanced technical training and life skills. Many of our students dropped out in the ninth or 10th grade, have an average academic functioning level of sixth-grade level when they join our Wyndham classes, and have an average age of 32. Students are ready for new opportunities, and we celebrate success as students progress throughout their coursework, enrollment, and completions with Wyndham. More than 68,000 students received WSD educational services in school year 2019. These were the highest priority students as resources allowed based upon ages, release dates, and educational needs. WSD students in school year 2019 were supported by a combination of adult education, career and technical education, and life skill classes, all designated to support future employment WSD adult education and literacy programs aim to develop functional and advanced levels of literacy in individuals, leading to the attainment of a standard high school diploma or a high school equivalency certificate and/or industry-recognized credentials. In school year 2019, almost 28,000 students participated in WSD adult education and literacy programs. During the year, 9,250 students completed one or more educational functioning levels. These functioning levels encompass approximately two grade levels. The WSD recognized that in order to provide the most effective and efficient services, our educators and staff must be aware of the current best practices in instruction, communication, and support. The professional development in school year 2019 included motivational interviewing, strategic planning, accountability, technology, industry standards, and best practices. Of the 27,907 students who participated in our adult education and literacy programs, 4,511 students took the high school equivalency, HSE, exam in school year 2019. Of that group, 86% were awarded a certificate. A highlight of each student's HSE journey is graduation, where many families witnessed their graduates' experience of success during incarceration. Life skill is another area where our district programs help students refocus thinking, develop people skills, enhance cognitive skills, and retain better-paying jobs. Opportunities for Wyndham students in school year 2019 were supported by a combination of customized literacy courses, expanded career and technical CTE offerings, and focused life skill programs. WSD's diligence serves as a strategic differentiator for successful outcomes by providing data-driven programming. Programming expansion in school year 2019 focused on current industry employment needs and marketable employability to our students. These changes resulted in increasing numbers of students obtaining viable career training. WSD provided supplemental lead-and-achieve courses at designated campuses for students under the age of 22. The curriculum is designed to enhance academic, leadership, and employability skills. In addition to supporting the goal of achieving a high school diploma or equivalency, teachers and students spend 20% of class time on lessons dedicated directly to work readiness and career planning skills. Elected personal enrichment courses, also known as EPIC, are classes that we teach during our winter, spring, and summer breaks of school year 2019. These classes are centered on soft skill lessons, enhanced job readiness, career potential, and instructors included WSD teachers, administrators, and other staff members. There were almost 12,000 course enrollments in these classes with roughly 10,000 students attending. WSD's accountability system assists schools, employees, in comparing our campus data, tracking key unit activities, supporting the campus improvement plan, and recognizing units and unit personnel. This system allows WSD to track performance on critical measures and strengthen effectiveness in all program areas. Career and technical education combines quality instruction, preparation for industry certificates, and employment connections to help students build careers. During school year 2019, more than 21,000 students earned 25,754 CTE course completions with a 90% completion rate. Our CTE students earned 33,695 industry certificates. The WSD career and technical education programming provides a graduate with the skills and real-world learning experiences necessary to compete in today's workforce. The WSD workforce and reentry initiatives create the opportunity for successful reentry into employment, careers, and reconstructed lives. By connecting with industry leaders and community stakeholders, WSD gives students opportunities for skilled training, genuine career experience, and reduce chances of recidivism to create a stronger Texas workforce. WSD coordinated OJT and apprenticeship programs in partnership with TDCJ. Thanks to this partnership, workplace opportunities included on-the-job training and job-related apprenticeships within TDCJ. We are pleased to highlight the progress and the efforts within the WSD that are detailed in this report, and will continue to develop and implement innovative programs that support student success, provide the community with capable, reliable employees, and improve lives for individuals and their families during and following incarceration. I pause now for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Are there any questions from the Board? Hearing none. Again, thank you very much for a very good presentation, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding purchases and contracts over $500,000. Wyndham's Chief Financial Officer, Robert O'Banion, will be presenting. Thank you for joining us here today. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman and members. I'd like to request approval of a purchase over $500,000. You'll find under Tab F of your binder. We recommend awarding this purchase to Aztec Software, totaling $1,010,000 for student instructional software license. This purchase will provide instructional software to 84 computer labs across the district to support academic student achievement. Aztec Software has been in operation for 40 years as an adult education technology company and is currently utilized within a adult correctional environment within the Federal Bureau of Prisons, Oklahoma, Florida, and California. Wyndham School District has utilized this software at 11 of our campuses for this past year, providing supplemental academic services to eligible students. This purchase is being made through the Educational Service Center at Region 19, known as Allied States Cooperative in El Paso, Texas. Consistent with all of our purchasing cooperatives, the contract is bid and negotiated through the Educational Service Center, who does not charge any fees for this service. This is an annual license agreement for one year, beginning at the start of fiscal year 2021. The software provides diagnostic, prescriptive, computer-based instructions to support and enhance the academic programs. Funding for this purchase is included in the fiscal year 2021 budget as being presented to the Board today. I'll now pause for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Banion. Are there any questions? Thank you again. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees approve the purchases and contracts over $500,000 as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made. It has been seconded by Judge Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Let's move on to the budget. Over the last week, each Board member individually reviewed with the district superintendent and finance leaders the details of the Wyndham budget and salary schedule that will be presented today. This budget was a result of many months' preparation and numerous meetings with leadership offices on the needs of the district. A special thank you to Christina Hartman, Robert O'Banion, and John Lilly for their insight and vision on this project. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the Wyndham School District budget and salary schedule for 2020-2021. Mr. O'Banion, please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman and members, for this opportunity to discuss our budget for the 2021 school year and for your support of our district's mission. We've experienced several changes that we have incorporated into this upcoming school year. I'll now go over some of those areas within our 2021 budget located behind Tab G in your binder. If you'll turn to Page 3 in the Wyndham School District budget book, you'll notice that the all-funds revenue decreased for fiscal year '21 by 12.5% to $63,314,798. This significantly... This significant $9 million decrease in revenue can primarily be broken down into two areas. The first is a $2.9 million appropriation decrease from the Texas Education Agency as a result of the 5% legislative reduction. The second area is a significant decrease from the memorandum of understanding with TDCJ, which decreased approximately $4.6 million. On the positive side, the TDEA budgeted grant funds increased by almost $1 million. The all-funds budgeted expenditures decreased for fiscal year 21 by 7% or $5 million to Four expenditures from a 5% legislative reduction resulted in the elimination of operating funds as well as 43.5 vacant teaching positions and 10 vacant non-teaching positions for a total reduction of $2,855,750. Additional legislative reductions within TDCJ reduced MOU funding $4,611,035, resulting in the elimination of the current health and wellness model and 87.3 FTEs. We've also included funds in this budget for the expansion in several program areas, I wanted to point out. The first is the budget includes funding for the purchase of student educational software at 84 facilities at a cost of $1,010,001 to support student academic achievement. This was previously outlined as a board agenda item. Additionally, increased expenditures within instructional, within the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, a federal grant in the amount of $204,693, allows for two new positions in operating for this population. Finally, funding is included for the high school pilot program, high school diploma pilot program, in the amount of $236,966 to establish the standard high school diploma option for eligible students within the current education department at the Ferguson Unit. If you'll now turn to the personnel schedule at the bottom of Page 8, you'll see that the overall total FTEs decreased from last year, budgeted by 139 to 1,066.9 FTEs for fiscal year 21. The remaining pages, 9 through 13, of the budget reflect our different salary plans. We're requesting that the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees approve the 2020 budget for the Wyndham School District as presented and the salary schedule as board policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Banion. As I told the TDCJ counterparts, I realize this was a unique and challenging year for you to come up with the budget. No instructions, people having to meet virtually, having to explain this to us virtually, unprecedented challenges, and you were up to the task in meeting them and assembling this budget. On behalf of the board, we are very appreciative for all the hard work you had to do this year, and hopefully this will be the last year for having to go through a process like this. So I just want to say thank you very much, and I'll leave it at that. Does anyone else have any comments for Mr. O'Banion?
I do. This is Mono Dayala. Mr. O'Banion, Ms. Hartman, and your team, you know, kudos to you all for, you know, staying true to your priorities, sharpening your pencils, being good stewards of the dollars. This isn't, this isn't easy to do, to be kind of thrown a curveball like this in the middle of a two-year budget cycle. So anyway, just take my hats off to you guys. Thank you for all you do, and keep up the good work.
Okay. With that, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees approve the Wyndham School District Budget and Salary Schedule for fiscal year 2021 as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second? A motion has been made. It has been seconded by Mr. Nichols. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Now to the public comments section. The Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is committed to providing an opportunity for public presentations on posted agenda topics as well as for public comments on issues within its jurisdiction as provided in Board Rule 301. Persons interested in speaking at today's meeting were required to complete and submit a registration form provided in the posting of today's meeting by 5:00 p.m. on August 12, 2020. As stated at the beginning of today's meeting, no speaker registration cards were received by board staff prior to the required deadline. Therefore, no public comments will be heard on issues at this meeting. I would like to thank all of you for coming here today and remind you that the next meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees will be Friday, October 30, at the Doubletree Hotel Northwest Arboretum in Austin. The Wyndham School District Board of Trustees will reconvene at 1:15 p.m. to conduct executive session, which is closed to the public. Executive session will be conducted via video conference, and that is, it's a separate invite that all of you should have. So we'll need to leave this meeting and join that other one. The 319th meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is now recessed. It is 1:06 p.m. I'll see you again at 1:15.